Okay, let's call this meeting in order. Notice of an open work session to the City Council of the City of North Kansas City, Missouri, September 3rd, 2019. Mr. Eric.
Thanks, sir. Tonight's work session is on North Kansas City's emergency management program and in our emergency operations plan. Councilmember DeLong had asked if we could do an overview of the plans that we have in place, and so to perform that overview is Chief Dave Hargus from the Fire Department, who's also Emergency Management Director, so I'll turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm going to do kind of a broad, general overview of the emergency management program and the emergency operations plan. Anytime through it, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me and ask, and I'll try to answer them. So, as the fire chief, I also serve as Emergency Management Director. When I took over that position, I was sworn in by the mayor and appointed by the council. I'm responsible for maintaining and updating the emergency operations plan, which the city uses, and making sure we have an operable emergency operations center. I provide direction to the mayor and the city administrator when we have some type of emergency on whether we need to make a declaration or open the emergency operations center for operations. I'm essentially in the command and control function in the emergency operations center. I run the functions underneath everybody in there and answer to the mayor and the city administrator and give them advice on responding to the disasters or mitigating their recovery.
Where is the EOC?
It's the, I believe you call it the community room in the Police Department, and we have an alternate, which is the training room at the Fire Department. So, I'm also responsible for coordinating any assistance we need through the state or the federal government. I liaison with the State Emergency Management Agency, with the coordinator there to assure that we get the resources we need. We're in the Missouri, the State Emergency Management Agency's Region A, and there are nine regions statewide, and we work together as a whole, but each one has a different coordinator, and we, if there's a, in our region, if there's a disaster, we all work together within the region. We meet every quarter at a minimum. All the regional directors get together, and we have a meeting and go over needs and trainings for our region or anything that may be going on. Our region is really good that we have excellent relationships within it. Clay County is a big player in there with us, and so is Kansas City, Missouri, and we all meet together on a regular basis. We go to exercises throughout the year, whether they be local, state, or federal exercises. Usually, somebody from this area, Clay County, Kansas City, us, and our regional director are all there, working together in those exercises, so that if we have something that happens here, we already have personal connections with each other. We have each other's cellphone numbers and home numbers, and we work together on exercises on a regular basis, so it makes for a really good relationship. We really get along and play well together. With the part of this, we do the emergency operations plan, which is basically our playbook if we have a disaster. It's part of, the State Emergency Management Agency wants us to have that. We developed it in 2005. It became a new document. It's reviewed by the state every three years. I review it annually, meet with the other directors, and make sure things are updated. Like, when Jesse was elected into the council, he was added into that playbook. His information is in there. So, we keep that updated on a regular basis. Each of the department heads has a copy of that. We also keep a copy of it that's up to date on our management drive, so that we can access it if we need it. And it just, it gives us that direction if we have something of what we need to do to mitigate it. The plan is, it's considered a multi-hazard functional plan, and it's broken into three components. We have a basic plan, and then we have annexes that discuss the specific emergency responses, and then we have appendixes, which actually follow back to those, and we're going to go through some of those here in a minute. We talked about the emergency operations center. That's one of the things that's required. The Police Department has our initial one. They're required to have generator, backup generators, and the Police Department and the Fire Department both has those, and we also need to have facilities where if we have a multi-day or week operation going on, we can provide food. Both of the places have kitchen facilities in order to do that, and that's part of the reason they're located in those areas, is so we can do that. So, if we have to be there for days or weeks, depending on what's going on, that we can maintain that emergency operations center. And our, at the Fire Department, our generators, we've got a diesel backup, but it runs on natural gas, so we can, as long as the natural gas system's still in operation, we can keep it going. If there were an event, a disaster, or some type of catastrophe, that a tornado come through and wiped out both of those, Eric, the mayor, and myself would get together and select an alternate location, which would probably be the county EOC, or we would move up to another building where we could set up that operations. And our IT director is also partially responsible for this, because if we actually set up the emergency operations center, we'd have multiple phone connections, and we would have different people doing different functions in there to run whatever the operation is. The IC would still be on the ground somewhere, but this would be actually the command center providing them with the resources and the logistical support they need to continue the operation. Typically, we're not going to open the emergency operations center unless it's a very large-scale event where we're going to be bringing in the different departments, Public Works, PD, Community Development, and those things, and having to spend financial resources to mitigate the incident. So, it's, if you hear that we've opened the emergency operations center, you know that we have something major going on.
Didn't, didn't, didn't we used to have the Y? I mean, before, it was a Y, wasn't it? That emergency gathering place?
That was the emergency shelter.
Oh, the shelter.
If we had to evacuate people somewhere or something, that was, and it's still listed in our resources as an emergency shelter, we still have that capability with them to house people there in the event of a disaster. But, no, the emergency operations is kind of like the headquarters for things going on, and it'll only be essential personnel in there at that time. On the, on the basic plan, and if we open the emergency operations center, this is kind of the hierarchy chart for that. Of course, the mayor decides the policy, the city administrator's right there, and then the Emergency Management Director, which would be myself, is the command and control of the emergency operations center, and we would be determining, depending on what the disaster was, what parts of these we're going to use. I mean, it has all the boxes there, but depending on what the disaster is, we may not need all of those. Typically, communications and warning and the emergency public information, we're going to be needing those to get that message out. Damage assessment, depending on what it is. Like I said, it all depends on the type of disaster of what we need here. We're going to plug those people in, they'll be sitting on the phone, and they'll be running other people on the ground. It's just a way to command and control, to break down, so that we don't get outside that span of control, because as Emergency Management Director, I can't be managing the public information, the Fire Department, PD, and all those, and it breaks it down into a viable chain of command and a structure that can be operated for a long period of As I said before, our emergency operations plan has the basic plan, which is just kind of sets out who does what, and then it has emergency operation annexes, which defines the emergency functions in response to the emergency. It's, we have 15 annexes. Let's see, right here they are. They list out the main things we're going through. When you get down to the catastrophic event, typically in Missouri right now, we would consider a catastrophic event a New Madrid Fault Shift, an earthquake from there, because we would be affected. There would be probably over 800,000 people affected in the state, and I think the latest predictions I saw last week were there maybe 5,000 to 8,000 fatalities. But we would feel the shaking here and probably have moderate damage, hopefully not any infrastructure damage, but that and a nuclear event would be what's considered catastrophic events. As you can see, we have evacuation, hazardous materials, fire and rescue. Those are all, when we break down, we get looking at the appendices, those are broke down for an event of a flood, or the different disasters, tornado, it breaks those down. But basic, these are our basic 15 annexes right here that's listed in our emergency operations plan, and they fall along with the state has an emergency operations plan with the same annexes FEMA. Everything falls together throughout the emergency management world. This is an example of Annex A, which is the command and control. It talks about the coordinators, who the support responsibilities are, primary responsibilities, and then the purpose and scope, and each of the annexes have the same, same type of layout. And it's, it's really, it's a 385-page document, so that's why it's broken down into these sections, so that we kind of have manageable bites when we get into emergency operation, that we can flip this open, and it's like, Eric needs to be doing this, Steve, you need to be doing this, and this is what I'm doing. And it makes it, there's not a lot of cities around that keep up on these like we do in the region. So, we're, we kind of brag on ourselves in the region a lot that we're prepared, and we hope we don't have to test that, but we think we're prepared. There'll be some issues probably if we have something, but we're, we work toward it. Every month, we're doing something to make sure we are prepared. Our, the appendices, they're the, they're kind of like the direction for each annex. When you get into that, depending on what, if it's a flood, if it's a tornado, it kind of breaks down the characteristics and regulatory requirements we need to perform those functions in a proper manner. This is how they're listed. This is Appendix 4 to Annex G. I think one of the things that Brian had talked about, he, and was it Dayton?
Yeah, the Dayton area.
The Dayton area that they had issues when they had their tornado was how to handle the volunteers that were coming in. People typically self-dispatch. Sometimes the media will say, "If you're an EMT, or you can do this, you need to go here and help." That doesn't help us. So, what this does is shows what we're going to try to do is use our non-governmental agency partners, which we've already had contact with and know about this, so if volunteers are coming in, we're going to direct them to the Red Cross. Now, if people are wanting to bring food, we're going to have, Kim's our Public Information Officer, she's going to be sending out, "If you want to donate, give money to these organizations." And it's, it'll be the proper organizations, Harvesters, Red Cross, those type of things where they can take that, and then as, we're sitting in the emergency operations center, and we go, "We need 500 cases of water," we can call these organizations up and get that here, and we don't have to try to worry about what to do when people are bringing truckloads of water down and dumping them off in front of the station, or we've got 30 volunteers. We can direct them toward the other agencies, the volunteer agencies, and they will coordinate, and we go, "Hey, we need 30 people on the south side of town to fill sandbags. They'll send us 30 people down there. We'll have accountability for them," and it helps break those things down. So, not knowing what Dayton has in place to do that, this is, we're already thinking about that, because we've seen, and especially in the region, when we do our coordinator meetings, we'll take a disaster someplace else, and we'll look at those issues, or sometimes even some of those people will come into our meetings and say, "We had a flood event, and this is what our issues were. This is what worked really well. This didn't work so well." So, and, so we all try to work together to come up with solutions for those problems before it happens here. So, this is our resource list. We have lists of resources in the, in the emergency operations plan, so we kind of know what we have on hand or where to get things. Also, in the appendix, it'll also list, where we're talking about Victory L. Phillips, it'll have the contact information, who our point of contact is there, and a number to get ahold of them, and a lot of these will have 24-hour notices that we're, we've already talked to them prior to, that if we have an emergency, we're going to be expecting to get this from you. And we do the updates on the emergency operations plan. We try to talk to those people, so they go, "Okay, you say you have 30 generators for us. How many do you typically normally have here all the time?" So that we're, we're keeping our resource list to resources that we actually have available, not what they say. Because that's like if they ask me, "How many pumpers and ambulances do you have?", I'm going to say, "We have, we have three pumpers and two ambulances, but when it comes to mutual aid and giving those as resources, that's not, we're not going to send them all of our resources. We're going to send them one ambulance and one pumper in a, in a perfect situation." So, we're trying to, as a region, go through and type these resources and get the true numbers of what, yeah, you say that's what you have, but what are you going to give us? So that when it comes down, we know who to ask for for the right resources. And that's, that's part of this whole emergency operations plan and the emergency management program, is to coordinate, because we know if we have a large disaster here, we're not going to be able to handle it with just us. So, this is to put all that stuff in place on how to get those resources we need to get us through, and where to get ahold of them, how to get ahold of them, and that's where that interaction at, on the regional level, that we know each other, that I can call these people up, and they know, hey, okay, and they send the stuff, and it's the same with us. We, it's that mutual aid that we're going to take care of each other in a disaster, because we're all emergency managers in the state of Missouri.
Who's coordinating a lot of that? Is that all through Mark doing a lot of that, or is...
It's SEMA.
SEMA, okay.
It's the State Emergency Management. Mark plays into that, but, but all of this is usually done through the State Emergency Management Agency.
Thank you.
This is some more appendixes. We have a functional diagram for the damage assessment. You talked about that as well, I think, about their recovery efforts. A large part of that's getting the initial damage assessment. This is showing that command and control for that. This is going to be more of a recovery effort than during the response, so the administration, which is going to be Eric and the mayor, are going to take over handling part of that. Community Development's going to be providing inspectors. We have resources listed that we can give to people if they're, they're out of work, they need individual assistance, Department of Health, insurance, to help them get on that, "How do I get ahold of my insurance company? What am I going to get done? I'm unemployed now because of the flood. Is there anything I can do?" This gives them that ability to do that. And then we have our damage assessment forms, which are standardized. That way, when the disaster happens, we don't have to go online looking for something, because, I mean, most places just don't have damage assessment forms lying around. We have these, they also, if you'll see the categories, they have affected, damaged, destroyed, inaccessible, and major, and those are also the SEMA and FEMA designations, so that when we do our initial damage assessments and we start moving toward that recovery effort and going to FEMA for reimbursement, that we're using the same language. We've got a common language going forward for our damage assessments, so we're not saying, "It was slightly damaged," and they're like, "Well, what's that?" So, we're using that same verbiage and language going forward. That's kind of what the emergency operations plan sets out to, that we're all on the same, same page, so as we start down the road, you know, the disaster's going to happen for a few days, a few weeks. The recovery effort typically takes years. Hurricane Sandy, there's still stuff that hasn't been finished on it. There's still people waiting for reimbursements and funds on that. So, it's a long process, and the more we're in line with the state and federal agencies on our verbiage and our, our forms, it expedites that process, so we don't have to keep going back and reiterating what we've already done. This is more of the damage assessment forms. On the right is the Local Jurisdiction Situational Awareness Report, and what that is, is it's kind of antiquated for what we use now. Right now, the state has a, it's called a Web EOC, which is a web-based emergency operations center. I have a log onto that, so that if we have an emergency, or even like last winter when we were having the winter storms and the severe weather during the summer, the emergency managers get on there and they put in jurisdictional status reports, and the state can see it. The State Emergency Operations Center has somebody monitoring this all the time, and the other area emergency managers can see what's happened next to them. And if I need a resource, I can type in there, "We need this." SEMA will see it and start their request process even before I make a phone call, but it's alive. Anytime there's an emergency in the state or any type of weather event, we're all on there, keeping each other updated on what's going on with our jurisdictional statuses.
So, that's actually what I had a question about. So, when we have like weird things, like a microburst or like storm where trees fall on houses or something, I just, it's kind of sporadic. It doesn't happen to a whole neighborhood. Is, is any of this incorporated in that process, or is that a one-off situation, or how do you, how do you work that?
That's kind of a one-off situation. This is set up for the tornado coming through town as opposed to the microburst, or ice storm where we're all out of power for days at a time, or snow that we have people trapped. Like in 2013, we had this snowstorm where people were trapped on Armour Road, and their cars were running out of gas. We were getting ready to open up the YMCA as an emergency shelter when things kind of started winding down on that, but it's, this is more for the, the events that affect the whole community as opposed to individuals.
So, I mean, it's better off if you're going to have house damage, right? You have a whole tornado, right, that comes through, not a microburst, it's just bad luck. But do you have like a limit, like a certain number of people get impacted? Because a tornado could come through half of this town, doesn't come through the rest of the town. I mean, is there some sort of a way you determine what's critical enough to get into this process?
It, it is how many people are affected, whether, when it starts to overwhelm our resources that we have, and we, we start needing assistance for mutual aid, whether it be PD or fire to, and Public Works as well, when we start overwhelming our capabilities of normal operations, then we start looking at doing this.
Okay, so it's when we exceed our resources or resource capacity?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, go ahead. You know, I don't know, but you don't hear a whole lot about, you know, if, if the floods would come from the Missouri River, come over the levee and get, come, how far would that come up into North Kansas City? I mean...
The, and it hasn't been added into that, but we've been working with the levee board about doing evacuation, more primary evacuation routes, more designated, and part of that process, they gave us inundation maps, showing us what would happen in case of a levee breach, and except for up on the hill and the hospital, there would essentially be four to six feet of water in most of the town.
Well, if that happened, what would happen to our two emergency offices?
We might be moving to the hospitals.
Okay.
And that, and that's a possibility. We have a good relationship with the Emergency Management Director at the hospital. We participate in drills with them, too. They have a very robust emergency operations center up there. We would either move to there or Clay County, depending on what else was going on.
In a case like that, though, we would have some warning. I mean, we'd know that the water level was getting to a point where we needed to make those kind of arrangements.
And we have action levels built in through our flood plan, that when, when the river level gets to a certain point, we start having meetings with the levee district and the Corps of Engineers and the Coast Guard, and it, and then as it goes up, we intensify those until it gets to the point where myself, Eric, and you would make a decision if we're going to have a mandatory evacuation of the city or not. So, I'm, I'm hoping that comes after my tenure.
You know, when I got into this thing, the thing that worried me was if a guy had to say, "Okay, let's get out," and then you didn't have to, you'd look like a fool, and then if you didn't get out, and then you got flooded, then you'd really look like a fool. So, I know we're in a situation.
Well, and that's where we have that, that relationship with the levee board and the Corps of Engineers, that when we make that decision, hopefully it's the right one.
Yeah.
Because we have to weigh those risks of, I think some of the inundation maps showed that it would, in less than four hours, the entire city would be underwater, so it doesn't give you a lot of time to wait till the last minute to decide to make that, that evacuation, because it's, it's going to be difficult going down here and telling the businesses, "You're going to have to close and leave today."
Yeah.
And that would be an overtopping, not any other sort of breach?
We have an overtopping, which is probably the least likely, would be when it gets to, when it gets to a certain point, we're going to do an evacuation, because the levees can fail at that point. So, that would be the, the thing, is if a sand boil somewhere got underneath the levee and caused a failure of the levee system itself, which is probably more likely than an overtopping. And that's why they, they have the really robust inspection system, and they're going around when the, when the water levels come up. You'll see the trucks up on the levee doing the daily inspections, so that we're, we keep on top of that.
Thank you.
Like I said, the Web EOC, that situational awareness report, it's a, really a big thing, and everybody's finally gotten aboard. They've got the software up there that we can talk to each other. The National Weather Service has a, has a lot of things we can use as well, and I'll kind of get into that on the next slide, too. The, the emergency management people, especially with the hurricane in Florida, you hear people talking about FEMA and FEMA's response, and FEMA didn't do this, and FEMA hasn't done that. What most people don't realize is the emergency management program is based on neighbor helping neighbor initially. You help the guy that lives next door to you. We, as a city, as the departments and the government body, we take care of our city first. We use our resources to take care of ourselves. When we're overwhelmed, we use our neighbors to help us. We call in mutual aid, statewide mutual aid, to, to help on the local level. When that becomes overwhelmed, or our other communities around us are suffering the same disaster, then we look at the state level. And, and the state level provides us with those resources that we can't get locally. We have, well, going back to the county, we can have emergency operator, if we had something here and opened the EOC up and I needed assistance, I can call Will Aiken, who's the emergency manager for Clay County. He'll come down here and help us. Kim is our PIO. She knows other POs in the county that she can call that will come down and assist her with putting out messages, whether it be on social media or television, radio, getting out the message that, "Hey, we need to evacuate," or, "Hey, things are fine, but stay away from this part of town, and this is what we need you to do." So, the county's a pretty good resource, unless it's a widespread disaster that it's taxing the county. And at that point, we're going to talk to the state. We have a, the Fire Department has a very robust statewide mutual aid system. When things look like they're happening someplace in the state, I'll get a phone call and they'll say, "We're putting together strike teams of pumpers and ambulances to send to Oak Grove." That happened a couple of years ago. We said we can stand up a pumper and an ambulance to go, and they start putting those resources together, then when the people start calling in for those resources, we've got them sitting here ready to roll. So, we have the, the strike teams that can do that. When we open the EOC, it's going to be kind of, people aren't used to doing that. We can request what's called an incident support team from the state. They have people that are specially trained in emergency management and EOCs. They'll send us a team of four to six people that will show up with a bag to stay with us for two weeks if we went to, to help us in that decision-making process and running that operation, because they're, they're trained, and those, those teams travel all over the country for training to go into disasters, working in an emergency operations center to get that, get that knowledge to bring to us, and we have that available. Some agencies just have an emergency manager, and they don't have the support of an EOC team, the Police Department, to do, so they, their emergency operations plan, so if they stand up their EOC, they request an incident support team. And that's why having the relationship that we do with our, our state coordinator and our region facilitates that process. The Missouri National Guard, if we need them, we have to request that through the state. Every, every request above the county level goes through the state, because the Missouri National Guard is either going to be deployed as a state asset, and that means the state is going to fund what it costs for that operation, or the governor's going to request that the federal government deploy them as a federal team, and then the FEMA will pick up the cost, so that's, it's, it gets into dollars and cents even when you're requesting those resources there. But all resource requests above the state level have to go through the state. Anything we want from the federal government has to go through our state, state regional coordinator. Federal government, we request assistance from them. Federal government, we request assistance from them. FEMA, they can send us an incident management team, which is essentially the same as an incident support team, only it's made up of FEMA members. They typically deploy to large-scale disasters like wildfires, where they're going to be there for, for days and weeks and maybe even months sometimes. So they, they send those resources out there. The ATF, the FBI, nuclear regulatory agencies are all there to assist us, but those requests have to go through our state regional director. So that, that's how that goes. I send it to CIMA, they talk to the governor, the governor requests the federal resources. So that's why we, we try to work together on a regular basis. The non-governmental organizations and the COADS, which is kind of a new thing in emergency management, is the community organizations active in disasters. Missouri's putting together a COAD program statewide right now. But there, the Red Cross, Salvation Army, CERT, the CERT teams, the citizen teams, those are all other resources that we can use, like we talked about, to handle our volunteers or to handle donations of food and water to get that turned into monetary donations that we can use on a sustained basis. And we don't have to worry about food rotting and expiration dates and stuff. So those are, they're kind of the additional resources we have. The, let's see here. The whole thing with this is that in the, at the state level and federal level, the National Weather Service, we, we had a conference last week with CIMA. They have some new stuff that if we have a hazardous materials incident, they have modeling that can tell us where the plume's going. Prior, we had things that told us for the first hour what it's going to do. They can provide us with a map for up to 48 hours of wind shifts and changes and how the chemicals and stuff will be affected. So those are resources that we have as well. We've, we utilize them actually now for when we have like the Arts in the Park event, if there's a chance of severe weather and things, we can have them pinpoint our location on their radar. And they'll have a contact person on the ground, and they will actually monitor the conditions in our area and call someone, hey, you're going to have storms impacting your area in 50 minutes. You might want to evacuate, or there's storms in your area, but you're going to be clear. And we recently have used them on some events. We did a Snake Saturday, we did it with them last year. And talking to the, our regional representative last week, we're going to start doing that probably for all of our events, maybe in Fridays in the park, because they, they want to practice it as well. And we can, we can put a checkbox in our application that if there's no significant weather in the area or anticipated, then they just kind of don't call us or do a lot of stuff. But if there's anything there, they'll, it actually puts us on their radar map at the National Weather Service that a Snake Saturday is there. So when they're watching their radar, they're reminded, hey, there's an event going on there. So they have that. And the State Emergency Management Agency has a new mapping system now where if we have damage in the area, say a tornado goes through and we have significant damage between 21st and 23rd Street from Knox to Ozark, they can overlay that on a GIS mapping and tell us how many, how many homes are in that area, and using the census statistics and tell us how many people are affected by that. You know, if that, that's completely wiped out, there's, there's 45 people affected there, there's 35 houses, they'll have that information, they can overlay on a map, and within 12 hours have us materials to present to the public and for me to present to you of what the actual damage assessment on the ground is. So there's a lot of, with technology, there's a lot of new stuff coming out in the emergency management field. So that's kind of my presentation tonight.
I asked, you mentioned chemicals. Do we know if the large rail yard presence over here, do we know what the trains are carrying through, if there's dangerous chemicals coming through?
Yes.
Okay.
We, they have manifest that if we have an incident, we can call them up, they will know what's in that car, how much is in there, and all the information with it, as well as all of the, in our city, any business that has dangerous chemicals, we, we have what's called Tier 2 reporting. They send us, and Mark keeps it on a, it's, they now have a web base where we can access that too, that if we have an incident at one of those places, we know what's in there, we know they're dangerous chemicals.
Thank you.
Two questions. First, as I used to do bank audits and we would do disaster recovery plans, and something they did that was important was tabletop exercises. Do you guys do anything like that with the staff here to run through, like what would it look like if?
We had one, I designed one, and it's still on the shelf. We had a plan to do a tornado tabletop exercise earlier this year. We had some staff people out sick and we haven't rescheduled it, planning on getting that done, and I may design a winter weather one as well. I've been to a program, it's called the Homeland Security Exercise and Evaluation Program that teaches us how to do them. And they actually count toward, I'm involved in what's called Emergency, it's the EMPG Program, and it's Emergency Performance Grant through the state, and they pay part of my salary if I go to so many exercises a year, I attend certain classes, I go to the coordinator meetings, and part of that is I can design these, these tabletops, and they actually count toward our Emergency Management Performance Grant credits. So that, we do do those.
Very good. One other thing, so I see staff listed and the mayor listed, is there any council role in this, anything for us that we would be asked to do or could do?
It would be down the road when we...
We give money, we stay out of the way and give money. That's what I remember.
That's, that's where you would be...
That's what I learned in that day session. Stay out of the way and give money when needed.
And, and you would be, we would be keeping you updated on what's going on. And the mayor, I, as Emergency Management Director, I would serve at the direction of the mayor and, and Eric, and you would still have some input on, on certain directions that we go once we get outside of the initial response to the emergency. When we start talking about, okay, this is, we're going to need to rent 45 bulldozers for a week. So they're probably going to talk to you about some of that stuff, we're going to make those recommendations. But, but your role will still be to look at what's best for the community in that going forward with our recommendations.
I just want to thank you for putting this together. Good month for it too, September is preparedness month, so it worked out well. Looks like we have a good plan and hopefully we don't actually have to test it out.
That's, that's my, my thought as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.